And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, if you'll call the roll. Thank you. Good morning.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore. Councilmember O'Quinn.
Morning.
Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Morning. Councilmember Woods. Council Pro Tem Smithman.
Good morning.
Council President Alexander.
Good morning. Thank you. Minutes are not ready for the main meetings of August 17th, 2020, through January 4th, 2022. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Morning, Madam President, and good morning to the council. Madam President, can you hear me with this mask on?
You're a little muffled.
Is this better? All right, first, let me try that again by saying good morning to everybody. Madam President and council, I have a few notes. My first note is just still the emotional tug between hurt and anger as it relates to the double homicide this past Saturday night where Ms. Yasmin Wright lost her life. Many of you all know she was a student at We Nona High School, worked at the Birmingham Zoo for several years, and this is the toughest point of the toughest part. She was just four minutes away from her home. The truth is, she should be in class today. She should be making plans for spring break and/or prom, but her life was cut down short. Detectives are actively investigating this case. I want to share it with the public. If you have any information, please call Crime Stoppers at (205) 254-7777. Again, that phone number is (254) 7777. Can't share that information anonymous or be anonymous, but please, if you have any information, share it. In addition, another note, Madam President and council. There will be a warming station hosted tonight in the South Exhibit Hall at BJCC. Those needing warm shelter can come between 5:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. But there are other shelters, and One Roof and our ongoing partners are providing shelter as well. Following locations are the Salvation Army, located at 2015 26th Avenue North, Firehouse Shelter for Men, located at 626 Second Avenue North, and First Light for Women, located at 2230 Fourth Avenue North. Just a note about the Omicron variant. It continues to pound our state as well as our city and county. Positive rates are reaching alarming highs, as well as our hospitals are slammed. Still want to implore people to get vaccinated. It's the best way to keep you from being very, very sick or hospitalized. In addition to that, I want to recommend Booster as well. Speaking of Omicron, the ongoing impact COVID-19 has created operational challenges for the Department of Public Works. A staggering 13% of DPW employees are currently quarantined due to the pandemic. This has led to collection delays in some areas of our city and neighborhoods. Think you all should know, or at least I want you to know, that DPW crews are working as hard as possible in service to you. We utilize substitute drivers as well as collectors, as well as temporary hires to address some of the gaps. We do want to ask that the residents be patient with our teams as they work to address all routes in service to our city. And stay tuned for additional updates on some of our social media channels and our city's website. That, Madam President, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate those comments. All councils, I'm sure, took note of the information you shared. Of course, we want to share the information about the warming stations and what we're doing to provide service for our homeless population, to be sure that they're warm during this time of the year, as well as the information to please share information. If you see something, if you know something, please call Crime Stoppers at that number again, (205) 254-7777. I also want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for just giving us the update. I know that most of us have probably been reached out to by citizens regarding Department of Public Works and the pickup when it comes to trash. And so, thanks for sharing this about the challenges that we're having with staffing as it relates to that, and so I thank you. I do want to reiterate and just, you know, my love for District 7 and We Nona, and I do ask everyone to please just keep in prayer the family, the community, and just during this time, as we deal with the senseless nature of what happened with this particular crime and what we're dealing with here in this city. Thank you very much. At this time, councilors, if Mr. Clerk, if you will read for us the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Give me one second, please. Consent agenda starts on page... It's like... My pages aren't numbered here, I'm sorry. Can I hold yours, please? Let me get your agenda, please. I'll give it back to you. We'll start on page two with item one on consent. Skip over to page four. We have item two on consent. Page five, we have items three and four on consent. Page six, we have items five and six on consent. Page eight, we have items seven and eight on consent. Page nine, we have items nine and 10 on consent. Page 10, we have items 11, 12, and 13 on consent. Page 11, we have item 14 on consent. Page 12, item 15 is on consent. Page 13, items 16 and 17 on consent. Page 14, item 18 is on consent. Page 15, items 19 and 20 are on consent. Page 16, item number 21 is on consent. Page 17, item 22 is on consent. Page 18, item 23 is on consent. Page 19, we have items 24, 25, and 26 on consent. Page 20, items 27 and 28 are on consent. Page 21, item 29 is on consent. Page 22, we have items 30 and 31 on consent. Page 23, item 32 is on consent. Page 24, items 33 and 34 are on consent. And page 25, we have item 35 on consent. Page 26, we have items, item number 38 on consent. And it was also, it was recommended by Budget and Finance, I'm sorry. Page 27, we have items 39, 40, 41, 42, and 43 on consent. Page 28, we have items 44, 45, 46, 47, and 48 on consent. Page 29, we have items 49, 50, 51, 52, and 53 on consent. Page 30, we have items 54, 55, 56, and 56 on consent. Page 31, we have items 57, 58, 59, and 60 on consent. And we conclude with item number 61 on page 32.
Thank you very much. I know we've had some problems earlier with our pads, and so, councilors, do you have any items that you want to add or remove? We do have some addendum items.
That is correct. We're printing those now. Outside of the ones you already received in an email, we have some additional bold items coming as well.
All right. And those are the printed copies of those that were coming?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So at this time, can I entertain any... Does anyone have any additions that they'd like to add to consent or remove? What, Council Pro Tem?
Yes, Madam President. Can I add item 62, Addendum 62, to consent?
Yes. Councilors, item 62, and you don't have it in front of you. Let's see, I believe they're having it around.
It would go at item number 38, that's why.
Yes. Counselor 62 is just the funding source that goes with item number 38. That is listed as consent. So Pro Tem is asking you to consider to add that as a consent item. Had time to look at that. Okay. So we'll add that one as consent. We also have items 63, 64, and they're bringing the bold items. The bold agreement items, I believe there are five items that are going to be coming for us as an addendum. They've been presented to us, and we had to remove those. I'll get Chief Mitchell to just describe those items.
Lou. Sit down. Can you give me?
Two seconds.
One, two.
Testing, testing.
Good morning, councilors. Yes, as noted by President Pro Tem, the bold agreements that were before the council on that Tuesday where we had to recess the council meeting due to a notice, notification that we had to do publicly, we moved those items from the agenda to place them on today's agenda. It was a mistake by us that it didn't appear before the agenda on the regular agenda, so we apologize in advance. So those items have appeared before Budget and Finance and Economic Development concerning the bold agreements that have been before this council for a couple of years now. So just thank you for your consideration of those items.
All right. And again, we don't have those in front of us yet. ETA on that, Mr. Clerk?
Probably in the next five minutes.
All right. So as we go through, we'll wait on those to come in. I would like to ask if we could consent item number 64, the legislative agenda. Do you want, like, to bring those changes before then leave it off consent, so you can have the changes? Okay, we'll do that.
So, or is there anything outstanding?
And we still have the land bank number 63. Anyone want to consent that one?
I think we don't have to read that.
Well, we have to read that one. Approved.
Second. So we got Counselor Williams for the approval. Second, I heard a couple of more. I think I heard, okay. Voting should be open.
My iPad doesn't appear to be working.
Okay, how would you like it?
And I vote yes.
Councilmember Tate? You are, okay, O'Quinn, Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yeah.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That vote should be up.
All right, thank you. So the consent items are approved. Let me read the note. I apologize about considering, consideration of the consent agenda. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or a citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda or to business. All matters of permanent operation, which are indicated with a P, will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced, and those items have been approved. So I thank you, councilors. Anyone in the audience who is here for any of those items that have been approved for consent, those items are approved. You're, you may go if you wish, or you can stay around and continue to join us. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, first item for consideration.
Okay. We should be, let me see here. It's like everything is on consent. It's at 36. Should be at 36. And it is on page 26?
Yes, sir.
An ordinance amending Title IV Municipal Services, Chapter 5 Streets and Sidewalks, Article A General Provisions, Section 4-5-31, banners, signs, etc., suspended over streets of the general code of the City of Birmingham to provide for permitted encroachments over city streets and designated entertainment districts and commercial revitalization districts. And this is the item of permanent operation, so to pass today, I would need you to see initially.
I'll move for UC.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I'm motion on the item, please.
So move.
All right, got it. Item is before you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Pro Tem.
Chief Sparks. Chief Mitchell.
This will need to be here.
Oh, no, she just gave it to me. So I gave it to...
And we just wanted to hear if there was any discussion or any...
You can speak to it if you want.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention also that this was recommended by the Transportation Department. It's really a simple, basically, it's a change to the ordinance allowing for string lighting to be installed over the street and commercial revitalization districts, I think previously that had been restricted to entertainment districts, and so now it's just broadening of where that, that type of project can, can happen. So if you've been to Pepper Place and seen the installation that they've done over 29th Street, that's an example of what this type, what the expansion of this ordinance would allow.
Thank you, Mr. O'Quinn. If we don't have any other questions by the councilors about this item, we'll go ahead and entertain the vote.
All right, voting should be up. How would you like?
And I vote yes.
Thank you. That vote should be up.
All right, that item passes. That ordinance passes. Thank you. Next.
Next should be item 37. An ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a road access easement agreement between the City of Birmingham and Scanell Properties, number 569 LLC, under which the city will grant to Scanell Properties, 569 LLC, a 70-foot wide private easement over and across city-owned property located at 450 Republic Street and the Daniel Payton Industrial Park for road access, electric utilities, and drainage facilities to serve both adjoining property and Daniel Park Industrial Park owned by Scanell Properties, number 569 LLC, and city-owned property. Again, this is a permanent operation item. I need you to see to pass today.
So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion on the item, please.
So move.
Second.
All right, item is before you.
All right, at this time, if we could, councilors, I do know there was a question regarding some of the nomenclature regarding the size or width of the easement, and there was just a typo in the package that we provided. One item said 50 feet, and the other says 70. So Chief Mitchell, if you could just give us more about this item, your attorney.
We have Attorney Keith Sheffield coming forward to speak on the matter.
Thank you.
Morning, Keith Sheffield, Office of the President. This is an easement property in order to, for the access, the property that's being developed by Scanell Properties.
Could you speak up just a little more, Attorney Sheffield? He's having a little trouble hearing me. Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Scanell Properties is developing this project along Daniel Payton Industrial Park. This commercial structure, it basically takes up the entire piece of property, which Scanell Property is developing. So in order for them to truly develop this, this property, they need access on city property through this easement. It's beneficial for the city. There's the, the tax revenue that will be derived from this commercial development will be extremely beneficial from the city, and the city will ultimately be able to use this easement as well to access city property. So it's a, it's a win-win situation for the city, and it's, it's a positive, it's a, it's a positive easement, you know, and positive development for, for the city of Birmingham.
Thank you very much. And we did note just the typo that was between the two documentations, documents that we have. Councilors, my pad is working. I don't see anyone that has a request to speak. Do we have anyone? Mr. Abbott?
Mine is not.
Okay. Okay, sorry.
I just wanted to ask what the difference between a private easement and an easement is.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I can't hear you.
I would like to know the difference between an easement and a private easement.
I don't know that there's, there's a difference between an easement and a private easement.
Okay, well, I've just never seen the language "a private easement" before, and I thought maybe this was something special. Since we don't collect the $10 that they say that we're going to get, I figured there may be some interesting reason that it's a private easement, but you say it's just an easement like any other easement.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Attorney Sheffield. Councilors, we're ready to vote.
Okay. Give me one second. Should be open now. Councilmember O'Quinn? All right, that vote should be up.
All right, thank you. That item passes. Next item.
It should be at item 63, I guess.
Yes.
And a resolution pointing to two members to the Land Bank Authority of the City of Birmingham, Director Two, who will feel the uninspired term of Carol E. Clark designed, said term expired July 15, 2024, and Director Four, said term expired July 15, 2025.
And if we could go ahead, councilor?
Motion to approve. Second.
Our names?
We need the names.
So the Public Improvements Committee met yesterday, and we gave recommendations to replace Counselor Carol Clark, thank you for serving, and then to replace Rob Burton, who currently sits on the land bank. So Scotty Colson will replace Rob Burton, and then Joel Gardner will replace Counselor Carol Clark.
And those terms will expire?
They will expire July 15, 2024, and then July 15, 2025.
And we did have a motion and a second. That was by Counselor Pro Tem and Counselor Clark. Okay, we're ready for the vote.
Court, Pro Tem and Clark. One second. Voting should be open now.
All right, thank you very much. Those items passes. We want to thank these residents who have been appointed for the land bank authority. We know how important that service is to our city, so we welcome them joining us. We also thank the two members that have been replaced, that have served diligently. So thank you very much. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 64, resolution supporting the Birmingham City Council's 2022 legislative agenda. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
Item is before you.
All right, thank you. At this time, we want to thank our Government Affairs Committee, as well as the work that has been done in conjunction with the mayor's office and the Government Affairs Office there. Counselor Woods, you just want to just give an overview, and councilors, you have those items. We have reviewed those previously, but do you just want to walk us through that particular resolution?
Yes, ma'am. Real quick, Madam Chair, basically, this is our collective. I know Counselor Clark, some other councilors really wanted to have a joint legislative agenda that combined council and administration priorities, and so I want to thank the mayor as well as Earl Hillier Jr. for putting a lot of work into getting this together. We've had a lot of input from the council really over the last six months, but a lot of these items were a part of last year's agenda as well, and so was happy to see that done. But basically, this is something we want to put into practice going forward that kind of shows support coming from the City of Birmingham collectively, that we're all on the same page behind our legislative agenda, and so this resolution just represents that. Also, at the retreat, several of these items were presented by the administration as well, and so outside of any questions, I think we can go ahead. There was some updated language in the resolution, and so that's prepared now. Do you have that language, Mr. Clerk?
I don't know what was changed. I have no idea.
Just the highlighted portion of the "be it further resolved."
You may not have that highlighted.
Or the bold. Bold did not highlight it.
We got it for you.
Thanks, sir.
Should be the "be it further resolved" section. Looks like we added, when we start with "be it further resolved," at the Birmingham City Council, we added with Mayor Randall Woodfin concurring, and then the rest is previously printed. Will advocate for state legislative agenda items until each item has been enacted, amended, and/or presented to voters as a constitutional amendment.
Thank you very much. Again, we want to thank the Government Affairs, Mayor Woodfin, for working together on these, and if there are any comments from the councilors regarding the legislative agenda, we'll go ahead and entertain the vote.
It still says item 63.
Yeah, we've got to load it back up for us.
That, yeah, that's because I didn't have a chance to type it in system.
Oh, okay. Mr. Clerk, I'm not opposing at all. We want to do it the old way and just do the voice vote. Is that okay? But you have to read it again, or?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. There we go. All right, councilors, we're ready for the vote.
Mine is still showing 63.
Yours has had an update. You probably log in, log out, and log back in, and we'll get it. How would you like to vote on it?
I'll vote yes.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, thank you. That passes unanimously. Again, the legislative do went into session, I believe, today, yesterday, or today, and so they have the agenda before us that's been submitted jointly by the mayor and the council. Thank you very much. Next item.
Okay, those are, the items are still coming, so I have a couple here that we'll pass around. Make sure, Madam President, Pro Tem gets one, and then the rest of the council will distribute right quick.
And what's coming before you are those bold items. Again, they were presented during Budget and Finance and, I believe, with Economic Development.
Okay, your 64 showed it right away.
Well, it'd be good if I could give myself one, wouldn't it?
At least it's nice for them.
But I'm gonna read the items anyway, but we have the rest of them upcoming. But I'm gonna read the items anyway. But we have the rest of them upcoming. So the next would be the item 65, and note, should not be consent, because we already did the consent agenda before. So we'll strike that. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a bold program agreement with Rebirth Community Corporation, under which Rebirth Community Corporation is part of the city's building opportunities for lasting development program to implement their reboot, rebuilding better mental health and emotional wellness program to equip at-risk disadvantaged minorities, small business owners, and entrepreneurs with mental health services, wellness strategies, and emotional support needed to bounce back from COVID-19 pandemic for a term of 12 months for an amount not to exceed $67,000.
So moved.
Motion on the item, please.
So moved. All right, Counselors.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
I did.
Okay, I thought so.
Second by Protem.
Item is before you.
Okay. My iPad is still saying 63, so, yes.
And your iPad is not going to reflect the whole language. It's just going to say the actual bold company, because, again, I didn't get a chance to type that in there. We just did it, so.
Mine doesn't have any.
What do you see?
It ends at 64. We just rebooted.
All right, yes, as we're waiting. Did we get the motion?
We, I have the motion.
Okay. At this time, Counselors, any discussion on that particular item? We're ready for the vote.
Okay. How would you like to vote, Counselor Clark?
Yes.
All right, Counselor Tate and Williams. Williams is out. Okay, that vote should be up for 65.
All right, thank you. So we have approved the Bold Program Agreement with Rebirth Community Corporation. Next item.
All right, it should be item number 66. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a Bold Program Agreement with Women's Foundation of Alabama, under which the Foundation of Alabama is part of the city's building opportunities for lasting development program to strengthen its social innovation efforts to address job accessibility for women, and to address one of Birmingham's most pressing community problems, economic insecurity of women and their children, through its two-generation approach by intentionally catalyzing collaboration among community colleges and social service nonprofits in Birmingham for a 12 months for an amount not to exceed $79,720. Motion, please.
So moved.
All right, item is before you.
Any discussion on this item, Counselors? If not, we're ready for the vote.
All right. How would you like to vote, Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Okay. And Counselor Williams, is that so? Counselor Woods?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. That vote should be up.
All right, thank you. So we've just approved the Bold Program Agreement with the Women's Foundation of Alabama. Next item.
Item 67. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a Bold Program Agreement with Urban Impact, under which Urban Impact incorporates part of the city's building opportunities for lasting development program to, one, identify, organize, and deliver resources for small business owners to grow and sustain their businesses, and, two, identify and address barriers for women-owned, minority-owned, and disadvantaged business enterprises within the city of Birmingham for a term of 12 months for an amount not to exceed $125,500. Motion, please.
So moved. Second.
All right, item is before you.
All right, Counselors, any questions regarding this Bold Program Agreement with Urban Impact?
Madam President.
Yes, Ms. Clark.
The 12-month term, can someone tell us, is that a calendar year or fiscal year? How is that?
It's fiscal, I apologize, Madam President. It's fiscal year. Every contract is fiscal years. So it ends June 30 of 2022.
Really? Okay. Thank you. Are any other questions? All right, we're ready for the vote.
I have one, go in. Counselor Clark, how would you like to vote? Counselor Woods? Okay, I got you. All right.
All right, thank you. That item passes, and we just voted to approve the Bold Program Agreement with Urban Impact. Next item, please.
Item 68. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a Bold Program Agreement with Tech Alabama, doing business as Education Forum, under which Tech Alabama, doing business as Education Forum, is part of the city's building opportunities for lasting development program to conduct their 14-week Introduc the Recoding Boot Camp to 50 Birmingham residents, which will focus on digital skills training in addition to comprehensive student support services, including access to childcare loaned equipment for the duration of the program, as well as regular meetings with Success Coach to identify concrete goals and co-create customized pathways to achieving goals for the term of 12 months for an amount not to exceed $154,975.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Counselors, it's been moved and second. Are any questions regarding this Bold Agreement with Tech Alabama Education Forum? We're ready for the vote, Mr. Clark.
Counselor Clark, how would you like to vote?
Yes.
All right.
All right, thank you. That item passes. Next item, Mr. Clark.
Should be item 69. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a Bold Program Agreement with the Community Care Development Network, under which the Community Care Development Network is part of the city's building opportunities for lasting development program to implement their Inspire Education Program in partnership with Lawson State Community College, Jefferson State Community College, GED Works, Best Generation, Recruit Men in Work Faith, Birmingham, to help residents with the transition from high school to adult life, prison to society, and underemployment to career track job skills encompassing core academic education, job readiness, and financial literacy, in order to effect positive change in current economic and family structure conditions in Birmingham for a term of 12 months for an amount not to exceed $80,000.
So moved.
All right, item is before you.
All right, thank you, Counselors. Any questions regarding this particular Bold Agreement with Community Care Development Network? We're ready for the vote, Mr. Clark.
All right. Counselor Clark, how would you like to vote?
Yes.
And Counselor Member Oakley? That vote should be up.
All right, thank you. That motion passes. So we have executed a Bold Agreement with the Community Care Development Network. I do want to thank the mayor's team, that's IEO, and the other teams that worked on these five agreements. I think if we look at the services that we'll be rendering to our residents, we have coding, financial literacy, mental wellness, we have programs that will help women and children, and I believe all five of these organizations are either minority or entrepreneurial organizations. So I do thank you for this particular round of Bold Agreements and what we'll be doing for our city. So thank you all very much. And thank you, Counselors, for the vote that we've just taken on these items. Any other items on our agenda?
No, ma'am.
As far as items, thank you very much. At this time, Counselors, I'll entertain any updates that you have for your various districts. We can start with, are you ready, Counselor Woods? Are you okay with that? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Real quick, one announcement on, we're welcoming to District One, a new organization called Walk with a Doc, where once a month, we'll gather at East Benson Valley Rec and basically have a doctor come in and speak about different topics, health-related, and just walk and get exercise. And so we want to invite you out this Sunday at 2:00 PM at East Benson Valley Rec Center at the track for the inaugural Walk with the Doc. And so looking forward to it, and want to invite everybody out, get some steps in, and do some learning. So thank you, Madam.
Thank you very much. Counselor Tate?
Good morning to everyone. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Good to see everyone again. I don't have any announcements at this time, but we are going to be preparing some things that are going to be coming down the pipeline. So as they come down the pipeline, I would make sure that I make the announcement. But Happy New Year again. God bless everyone. I'm glad to be back.
Thank you, Counselor Tate. Counselor Clark?
Good morning, colleagues and citizens and city staff. We're all saddened by the untimely passing of Yasmin Wright, as the mayor noted earlier. She was the unintended victim of senseless gun violence over the weekend, and she was a 16-year-old girl full of promise and destined for great things. Among her many accomplishments, she was the 2021 Youth of the Year at the AG Gaston Boys and Girls Club in District Eight. And in her memory, the AG Gaston Boys and Girls Club is hosting a balloon release on Thursday, January 13, 2022, at 4:00 PM at the Howlett Clubhouse. Also, as we prepare to be litter-free in District Eight, the Five Points West community is leading District Eight's first cleanup of 2022 as part of the Martin Luther King Day of Service. So on January 17, come out and join us as we work in six neighborhoods to ensure the Five Points West community shines for its residents and visitors. Don't forget, the world is coming to Birmingham in 2022. Meeting tonight, neighborhood meeting tonight, we'll have one at Bellevue Heights Neighborhood Association at the Charles Brown Elementary School Gym. That's at 6:30. And there's also a dial-in option. You can dial 312-626-6799, and the code is 840-950-62527. And finally, just wishing everyone a bold and transformational 2022. I think we are the chosen ones who were created to give birth to the world we want to see, a world that works for everyone. These times are so troubling, so we've just got to change it. And that's our assignment. That's why we're here. So I just want to hold that for all of us, and, you know, we got to get something done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Moore?
Yes. Just want to echo my colleague's statement about Yasmin Wright. She may have mentioned that she was the Youth of the Year for 2021. Just kind of want to give some insight as to what that is. She had the opportunity to serve as a representative for not only, you know, the Howlett Club, but also as, just for the organization itself, AG Gaston. She represented AG Gaston. But as a Youth of the Year, you had an opportunity to compete on a state level for, to represent the state, and possibly even go to the national level. And Youth of the Years, who are able to win on a national level, have an opportunity to meet, you know, the president and get scholarship opportunities and things of that nature. And so she had, she had a lot ahead of her, and she was definitely on the right track. And so my heart goes out to her family, as well as the AG Gaston Boys and Girls Club We had a lot of different businesses that opened up in District Four. The Woodline Bar and Lounge had an opportunity to open up this Saturday. It was a great event. The community was definitely excited about it. We also had Morgan's Closet by Miss Andrea Collins on First Avenue North as well. An opportunity for, you know, women to come in, get clothes, and not only get clothes for interviews, but to also get training, and to just have support, you know, when they're trying to enter back into the workforce. And so excited to have her over in the Woodline area. We also have Therapy South that is going to be opening up or having their grand opening on tomorrow from 12:00 noon to 1:30 PM. It's also on First Avenue North. And so excited about them. We had a prayer walk that took place in North Birmingham. I just want to say thank you to Rachel Green with Chosen Angels, as well as Bishop Willie E. Sanders and Bishop Bobby Hogan, Greater Joy Deliverance Church, and Joyful News Family Church. We had an opportunity to come out and meet up in North Birmingham, 15-deep, and really walk around the neighborhood and just pray and connect with community, community members. And so it was a wonderful Saturday, and I'm looking forward to the next one that will take place in March. So we also have a couple of cleanup days that are going to be taking place on MLK Day. And so Collegeville will be meeting up at 10:00 AM in Macklin Park. We also have Norwood meeting up at Norwood Trolley Stop at 1:00 PM on that day as well. And so I want to make sure that folks know about it, so you can come out and bring your pickers and help us clean up. And then lastly, we got the mobile wellness van that will be going around the neighborhood as well. So today, they're stopping in Kingston from 9:30 until 1:30 over at the Royal Event Center. That's 4641 Richard Arrington Jr. Boulevard North. And so definitely take time to go in and visit and get some fresh vegetables and good fruit and stuff. And we also have a couple of neighborhood association meetings taking place tonight. We got Kelo Springs, as well as Northeast Lake. And so if you would like, as well as Penfield Park, if you would like information about how to get involved in those neighborhood associations, please give Trey Miller a call, 205-470-9360, and he'll give you conference information or conference call information. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. The Planning and Zoning Committee that was scheduled for tomorrow at 3:30 has been canceled. City Hall will be closed this coming Monday for the Martin Luther King Day of Service, and there will be no garbage pickup that day. So all the people whose garbage is normally picked up on Monday, don't put it out, because no one will come get it. The question is, does the city send a truck to pick up garbage in neighborhoods that did not receive garbage pickup, or do they just wait till the next pickup? Because we've seen a variety of things going on.
If I'm understanding your question correctly, Counselor Abbott, they wait until the next pickup. They don't send it, they wait until the next pickup, based on your question, if I'm understanding it.
Yeah, you understood the question, but they have actually come back on Wednesday after the Monday was missed and picked up the garbage, unless the recycle people are taking the garbage, which then raises other questions. So people are confused. They don't know when to put their garbage out, because it looks like the city comes and picks it up early.
So sometimes when that happens, if there's a special request, which we've either received from a council or citizens, sometimes then we will send staff out to pick up trash, just because we've received the request. But they wait, they're technically supposed to wait till the next scheduled pickup to put it out.
Okay, well, that was what I thought, but since I saw something different happen, I thought maybe a policy had changed. And it's always good to know if policies change. So thank you. Let's see, the East Avondale Neighborhood Association meeting is canceled for tonight, and the Highland Park Neighborhood Association meeting is being held at 6:00 via Zoom. I hope that everyone stays safe in this holiday New Year, and that our residents who are feeling stressed from the pandemic, and it makes them feel like they should run stop signs and throw more litter out of their cars than ever, I hope that they can work on that. Because I've never seen so many people running stop signs and throwing trash out their cars. Because I've never seen so many people running stop signs and throwing trash out their car windows as during this pandemic, and our streets just look horrible, and they're more dangerous because of all the stop sign running. You know, the police just can't be everywhere, but it's dangerous. I don't know what they're thinking, but stop sign running seems to be a pandemic result. So it's very strange. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Dr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. So Smithfield Neighborhood Association will meet Thursday, January 13th, at 7:00 PM at the, in the Nutrition Center at Smithfield Court. Also, on Monday is, of course, Martin Luther King Day. The Birmingham Civil Rights Institute will be having festivities there. The museum is free, however, you must reserve your ticket online, and they're going to be restricting the number of people they have in the museum to promote social distancing, and so you have to reserve your ticket online. And they have lots of different activities planned. You can also see those, join the festivities online, so they'll be streaming as well. And then, special note, on Monday, please be advised that if you have trash collection scheduled for Monday, that Monday is a city holiday, so the garbage trucks will not be running on Monday. And then, finally, I was able to join the faculty and staff at Parker High School last week for a professional development day, and was able to treat them to breakfast. So we have a video documenting that. If you can run that now, please. So this morning, we're at AH Parker High School.
So we got a family teaching here and scaffolding down, but quickly and celebrating.
For breakfast, and they're doing professional development this morning, so I had the opportunity to come and speak to the faculty and staff. I wanted to charge you to each play your own instrument, but realize that you're part of a greater symphony of service and one that is producing, you know, the leaders of the future. The work that they do is extremely important, and if you look at the history of Parker High School, there's been, you know, lots of folks who have gone on to do bigger and greater things, and we want to just recognize that the work that they do every day is part of that, that is, they're reaching out and touching these students on a daily basis, or even by virtual means, and they're guiding our future of our city, our state, our nation, and the work that they do is incredibly important. So I'm just very grateful that Principal Hudson reached out to me and gave me the opportunity to treat them to breakfast, and also just speak to the faculty and staff and encourage them to keep up the great work.
And for more from the Birmingham City Council, follow along with us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Stay safe, Birmingham.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you very much. I know, and I did, I saw that you were there at Parker High School. I was very excited. I have to say that my parents met, they were high school sweethearts at Parker, so I guess I have to thank Parker High School for being here. I believe, Counselor Tate, you did receive some information you'd like to share.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn.
Thank you again, Madam President, for allowing me to speak. I do have a few announcements to make. We will have a Public Safety Committee meeting today at 3:30 here in the council chambers. The next public safety meeting will be January 25th. Submission should be sent to my office, to Brandon McCray, for the next meeting by Thursday, January 20th, no later than 4:00 PM. We also have, I want to announce two boards that have openings for board members, the Special Care Facilities Financing Authority for Medical Center East, and the Special Care Facilities Financing Authority for Children's Hospital. Those that are interested, please email resumes to barbara jackson@barbara.jackson@Birmingham, spelled all the way out, AL.gov, no later than Friday, January 21st. That's, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Tate. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Robuck Springs Neighborhood will be meeting this Thursday, the 13th, at 7:00 o'clock at their usual place, New Beginnings Church. Northeast YMCA will be distributing 15- to 25-pound food boxes for families from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM while supplies last, and they will be doing this at their location the second Tuesday of the next three months, including this month, and that is their location on Red Lane Road. It is 628 Red Lane Road, and that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Counselor Protem?
Thank you, Madam President. Councilors, thank you for wearing your blue ribbons. Today is National Human Trafficking Awareness Day, so Junior League asked the committee members to wear blue, but I thought I could send it to you all for wearing the blue ribbons. So the South Tissaville Neighborhood will meet via teleconference at 5:30 PM today. The call-in number is 602-580-9484, and the access code is 684-6610. The Arlington-West End Community will meet via teleconference at 6:00 PM today. The call-in number is 425-436-6359, and the access code is 643-8112. The Arlington-West End Neighborhood Association will be having a library jam this Saturday from 12 to 4 at the West End Library. DJ Chris Coleman will be on the mic. The Birmingham Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Tau Incorporated will have a virtual panel discussion on human slash sex trafficking this Wednesday at 7:00 PM. The meeting ID is 934-5319-6534. The passcode is 992954. We will have panelist Chief Patrick Smith. We will have Special Agent Doug Gilmore from the Homeland Security, Attorney Ellie Freeman with the DA's Office, and the co-founders for the Black and Missing Foundation that will be on there. The next Budget and Finance meeting will be Monday, January 24th, 2022, at 3:30 PM. Submissions are due Wednesday, January 19th, by noon. Email submissions to liquidity.wilson@birminghamal.gov. The District Six Office would like to extend our heartfelt condolences to the family of Yasmin Wright. I am planning to, while I'm trying to get together with my office, have a meeting with our pastors and with some of our neighborhood officers, because that shooting did occur in District Six, and we also had another one 24 hours later. As I spoke before, I'm very disheartened because Yasmin was supposed to turn 16 next week, 17, it was 17, oh, somebody got the age wrong. Well, 17 next week, and so I don't think our kids should be afraid to, for their lives. Like, this is supposed to be the time where they're worrying about prom and applying for college, and as an aunt of a teenager that's in Birmingham, I can imagine what her aunt went through. So it's just, I hope we do better as adults, because clearly, us using our guns to resolve conflicts is not resolving anything. So lastly, as we look forward to honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., I encourage everyone to get involved. With the many MLK events happening in Birmingham this week, this is a great opportunity to reflect on his legacy and give back. And I'm actually supposed to be in Counselor Moore's district on Monday with Junior League. We're going to be helping revitalize Inglebrook Elementary, so I'll, oh, yeah, I'm coming to your district too, because the Birmingham Bar is doing something with Bush Hill Gardens, so I'll be excited to come to Districts Eight and Four this weekend.
Thank you very much, Madam Protem. Announcements for District Seven. We do have two neighborhood meetings that are taking place this week. Currently, the West Brownville Neighborhood, they started meeting virtually this morning at 10:00 AM. No, they'll actually meet virtually Thursday at 10:00 AM. And the Roosevelt City Neighborhood will meet virtually Thursday at 11:00 AM. So those are two upcoming meetings that we have virtually. And the Riley Trevallik Neighborhood will meet today virtually at 6:00 PM. I do also want to highlight the fact that there are many service opportunities that will be available for Martin Luther King Day on Monday, and the city council, we will be posting those events on our webpages, just to make you all aware of any service-oriented projects that you would like to participate in. All of those are outdoors, as far as the service, so we should be able to work safely out there in our neighborhoods. We'll be joining you, Ms. Clark. There are, we do share some areas in Central Park and Green Acres where the D7 Office will be out there, so we'll be happy to participate in that Five Points West Community Day of Service. And of course, I just also have to reiterate, we've talked a lot about Yasmin Wright this morning, and again, I am a grandmother of a 17-year-old, and so I can only think what her family is feeling today, and when I thought about her great aunt, was the one who had picked her up from work. She was doing everything we ask of our children to do. She was excelled in school, member of the band, just worked within the community through the work with the Boys and Girls Club, and so just an innocent, innocent bystander of just recklessness and lawlessness. And as we've all reiterated today, just what we can do individually, when we have conflict resolutions, when you have, you know, just problems with each other, if we could just put down our guns and just resolve that in a way that we used to be able to resolve things. I don't know what's going on in the world, but if we can just all, within ourselves, do what we can, so that a family like this, and we, you know, this young lady could have meant so much to us and other youth here in the city. So we do, again, our thoughts and prayers with that family, and what we can do as a community to keep something like this from happening. I thank you all today, councilors. We do want to thank our police officers who've been on duty with us, Cedric Pinkert, City Hall, Emerson Oldham from South Precinct, and Samuel Coleman from South Precinct. Councilors, before I entertain a motion for adjournment, I do want to remind you, we have a 911 meeting that was following, immediately following. We're all members of that board, so if we could still keep a quorum, so that we'll be able to conduct that meeting. I know Mr. Silas would love for us to remain. If I could have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all today, councilors. This meeting-